I'll call the April 25th, 2019 Town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting to order at 6:31. Present: Selectmen's Rep. Hal Kreider, Joe McCaffrey, Betty Smith, Vice Chair Lee Baldwin, Chair Bob Strobel, Victoria Parmerly.
(laughing).
Spit wall. I didn't have to spit that out.
(laughing).
And Town Staff.
Thanks.
Voting designation, all numbers present. We have minutes of April 11th to go over.
Motion to accept the minute. Second?
Okay, we're getting back into the swing of things. Good.
You check out.
Discussion on the minutes. Anybody have anything?
I didn't see anything on it.
I'll note that on page three, line six, that I was given the title of Chair even before the vote was recorded.
That's okay. That's not a complaint.
Weren't you still Chair from before? You were Chair from before.
You were Chair until you were re-elected Chair, so...
Okay, whatever.
The one's in future Chair.
Yeah. It seems perennial, but, okay. Anyway, no discussion hearing then. All those in favor of the minutes as written say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining?
See?
For absence reason? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm making that assumption, so that'd be 5:01. In favor. Okay. I'm going to take Chair's prerogative and reorder the agenda slightly to save some people some time. And we'll open case 1813 with Leadwood Realty Trust. And I have an email dated April 23rd, 2019, to James Burdine Planner.
Mr. Chair, a little background on this one. Since this is a site plan to cover an excavation, it will also require a new excavation permit. And that was something that I had noted in my staff report when this was originally submitted. The applicant delivered the materials that would cover review under 155E for the excavation permit, but those were delivered too late to provide adequate notice for a excavation permit application, since that is technically a separate application. So we recommended to the applicant that we, since we couldn't notice that, we couldn't have a public hearing on the excavation permit tonight. So we thought it was easier to continue the site plan discussion as well to next month so that we have time to do the proper notice.
Thank you for that background, because that would make reading this a lot more informative.
So that email is a confirmation from the applicant agreeing to that?
I will look at what we submitted for application fees, but you are correct that the excavation fee was not submitted, I assume, because there was no application form. We will send the fee and the abutter's fee, notice fee, to the Town Office in the next couple of days. We won't attend the April 25th meeting, but instead the May 23rd meeting. Thank you for paying attention and catching this matter. Sincerely, Peter Holden, Holden Engineering and Surveying. So that requires a motion from the Board to grant a continuance.
So moved.
Second?
And the date on that would be May 23. Discussion on the motion. So a motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Smith. B. Smith. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. That takes care of one. If there's anyone in the audience who is waiting for that application, you're welcome to stay, but you are, we will not be handling that application tonight. Case 18-20, 168 Granite Street Properties. I have a letter dated April 23rd, 2019. Dear Chairman and Members of the Board, I am writing to request that the hearing scheduled for April 25th, 2019 be postponed to the regularly scheduled meeting in May. We are still reviewing all options pertaining to a second access point to the site. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mark C. Sargent, LLS Project Manager. I'm going to entertain a motion.
Is that not work session, but the regular meeting?
That is the regular meeting. Right.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
So that'll be May 23rd, and that'll be motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. So... So that takes some weight off the agenda. We have, we'll go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. We have three preliminary conceptual consultations. One from, first up is MJS Engineering by property owned by Chris Myers. Just come right up to the table. If you have papers, I guess it's easier to hand them out than try to put them up on the board. We can be Chair.
We're Chair.
No problem at all. Eventually we'll find a pen that works. There we go.
This is...
You mind sharing?
Yeah.
Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourselves and tell us what you want to do?
Okay. Good evening. I'm Mike Seibert with MJS Engineering. Chris Meyer is with me, and his son Derek is with me also. And I handed out what we're actually proposing to do this evening with the aerial background to kind of orient some things, but I brought this first plan just as a reminder of what's there now. It's the old Bean subdivision, or Bean Road subdivision. As you probably well know, there was no road built there, so it's just this original subdivision here that is recorded, which was two, I think, two residential lots and a large open space piece. One of those lots didn't have the required amount of frontage, and one of them did, and I believe that was part of the open space concept there. And so this proposal, what you're looking at now, really just takes that same exact parcel, with the exception of Chris has added one lot down at the west corner. It was a small half-acre lot, I think, at the west corner of this, and that's the, he's bought the whole entire parcel and then added this one small lot, again, in that corner, which just adds additional frontage on Route 4.
So this is the lot adjacent to NECU?
Yes, exactly, right in the back there. And so this proposal would be a re-subdivision and really kind of a multiple lot-line revision to kind of pull all these together, reconfigure them, and then re-subdivide them. And then also build a small road, which you see coming right off of Route 4 there. So what that does is get us more of a commercial entrance at one location, rather than having single entrances out on Route 4, which will take all of those entrances out and go to this one location. And then the three front lots would be commercial, the two that you see right out there on the road frontage, and then the one that's at the right-hand corner of the cul-de-sac, the head of the cul-de-sac, would also be another commercial lot. And then there'd be a large residential lot, which already has a house on it, which would be right off of the head of the cul-de-sac there. And the original open space that was subdivided out of that original parcel would pretty much remain intact, with the exception of a little bit of stretching those first lots through an easement there. But then that property, or that parcel, would be combined through a lot-line revision to the Meyer family dented parcel. So, and the reason for that is a possible commercial expansion of that property. If you, if you look at that dash line right there, it's right up against that parking lot that we expanded several years ago. And there's just really nowhere to go for any expansion there. So this would provide a little bit more expansion to that existing dental property there. The intent is not to use a significant part of that large parcel, but just have the ability to go through there. Part of the intent was to also kind of use just the westerly side of that parcel for commercial development and kind of hold the middle of it more as just...
And you're saying that parcel?
That 12-acre, the original open space parcel that was back there.
You could, the representation I have is that very small front, so I'm having...
Yeah.
I mean, and it's white, and it's just really hard to read, even...
Yeah, I can, we can slide this down there, but, yeah, the, if you're looking at it, you know, right side up, it's that left-hand corner, which would be the northerly corner, I believe.
So it's the north and east corner?
Yeah. North and west corner.
So bounded by...
Bound by the Meyer family.
By the dentistry?
Yeah. And then also bounded by the proposed subdivision of the large lot where the existing house is. Yep. And if you go back to the original, so if you go back to this original subdivision way back, it's, it's this piece right here. Here's Meyer Dental. Here's the, this open space. And what I was saying with the change is the open space did come up through this 190-foot power line easement that cuts right across the middle of it. Now we're saying that these lots that will create up front here, commercial lots, we just push the boundary of that to the rear side of that so that the easement is technically on these new commercial lots right in the back. We don't really have a, you know, any design or any proposals for any of the lots, it's just kind of the reconfiguration and really just identifying and getting ready to go forward to get the road and get the access built so that we come in there. We've spoken with DOT and talked about combining that just onto one access, and of course, that's preferable for them. It gets it as far away as possible of the property that he owns from the intersection, and that would be just that one single entrance. So any access to the two parcels, the long narrow parcels on the left-hand side if you're coming in, would be off of this new road, not Route 4.
Okay, I was going to ask about that. So how's that going to work?
So Lot 11 would...
So we put an easement across that other parcel, and our intent is that we, you'd come into that new road in there and then take a left into that first parcel, and then there'd be a parking lot or configuration for a commercial development, and you just extend that through to the next piece. That's how you'd access that. Whether it's kind of through a parking lot and it's a combined development, or whether there's an actual little road there where you turn off of that to a small parking lot, we don't know yet, you know? But that's, that's also the reason for those lots to be kind of as big or as long as possible right now, just not knowing what's, what we really have there.
So there'd be easements, or, well, an easement created to get to the, what would be the most westerly lot?
Yes. Yeah.
And some wetlands crossings, it looks like?
Um, there, yeah, some small wetlands crossings. There's already that long gravel driveway that goes back there. That already crosses. We would try and maintain that. You know, that, it kind of crosses a property line there, so maybe I'll reconfigure things a little bit, or just, you know, make that work. We would try to minimize any of that, but yes, possibly there would be a small wetline crossing.
Yep. So just, I mean, maybe I just don't understand the real estate business, but I guess what I'm wondering is, what's the advantage of having two separate lots if you're going to sort of treat them the same, or have the, you know, the easement going through it? You're almost sort of combining them...
Right.
As-is.
Right.
I mean, not that I'd be opposed either way, but I'm just curious.
Really, it's just, as you start to look at your site regulations, it has different setbacks for different-sized buildings and so forth. So we were trying to look at a couple of different options. We'd like to keep the buildings as close to the road as possible, naturally, for the commercial use. So if you build, if you make that one parcel larger and the building footprint is larger, then it would start to get set back more.
Oh, I got you.
That's one thought.
Yeah.
We're here this evening with this concept, knowing full well that that lot could be combined as one big lot. And we, you know, that's, that's definitely an option that we would have to leave open depending on what commercial entity would come in.
Yeah, so you leave yourself some options there. I guess I was thinking, you know, it just seems, I can't, I can't describe exactly which places, but you know, like, I guess, like, you go to Concord and like the Home Depot and some of those places where you're coming off the road, you go in, you've got another little road, you go in, you've got another little... It's like, you know, you're always turning, and it's always, it seems like you waste a lot of space.
Right, yeah.
A good example that comes to mind is Tilton Northfield, over that exit of Market Basket and Walmart.
Yeah.
Where you're in the...
Yeah, you're in it.
Adjacent lots, three multiple shopping centers. I don't think they're all owned by, I think they're split up, so multiple roads in and out, but...
But I guess that's not really our purview. I mean, how they decide to do it is how they decide. I mean, just to observe something, the multiple driveways coming down on the road is something that we...
We wouldn't want, we wouldn't want multiple driveways coming down the road.
I mean, that's something that we certainly...
It's not our purview, but it's, because it's DOTs, but I think...
But it's something we discuss. They don't want it.
They don't want it.
Yeah. Well, that's the point. So it's something we discuss, and this has the merit, I mean, the proposal of limiting the driveway, and the same thing at these other places you're referring to, I think the same thing was occurring in some of those, whether it's Epsom and other places, where you've got very high-traffic volume coming down onto busy roads. So you limit the number of driveways. You've, you've done something, you know, it slows people up, as Bob observed. On the other hand, it keeps you, I mean, as you're moving back and forth, you're having to negotiate more, but it also limits the number of punches out onto the road.
Linda?
Hmm?
Sorry, we're done.
But so, I mean, there's, there's a merit there. I'm wondering about the wetlands, as I see them, and I'm not seeing them too well, as I said. The, the buildings, as you're envisioning it, would perhaps only be going back to where those, those wetlands are, it's kind of appearing in the middle of those two lots.
Right, right.
So they don't cross it apparently entirely, but I can't really, again, make out. That's where the structures would...
Right. We'd anticipate the structures up front, structure, or structures up front, and then parking kind of in back of that. And if we needed more, we'd try to loop around that if you needed more back there, or something like that. Potentially, there is a little disconnect between those, and I'm about to re-delineate these, because it's been quite a while, so I'll be redoing that within the next week. So that might change a little bit, you know, or not, or maybe stay exactly the same, but I'm sure they're still there, and we'll have to work around those. That's, that's the idea, is to just work around that as best we can, you know?
Is, Bob, because I've...
Linda's next.
Just a quick question on the open space. The property owner and I have had several conversations. I know it was his interest at one point to try to figure that out, what happened in the past. Is the open space, I realize you can sell it to somebody else, but is there a desire to leave it exactly as is, or did I understand you to say that you wanted to make some changes?
We would make changes to that, yeah.
Okay. And just so the Board is aware, what I had suggested to Mr. Myers was if they feel that that open space can somehow be altered, that the, they should come forward with a letter from an attorney stating the reason why, that the Board could then have reviewed by our attorney, because it's my understanding, looking at it, that the open space was designated as such and would stay as such. It is somewhat convoluted. What happened was, it was two different subdivisions, and the open space started with the first one, and then the second subdivision occurred, but that second subdivision was revoked, putting it back to the first.
The first, yeah.
All under the same ownership?
The part that's somewhat confusing is simply that one of the conditions was, was that something would be, that the property owner was to record what the uses were. However, the Board did designate it as open space, and our regulations do state the purpose of open space. So it's my understanding that that would need to be looked at from an attorney perspective.
Yeah, I mean, what we're, what we believe, and we'll have...
We don't have to get into that tonight. I just wanted to raise the issue.
Yeah, that's, and that's why I was kind of trying to explain it right up front, that we do want to change it. And the, the problem is that the subdivision never went forward, with the exception of that house, and then there was never a deed recorded for that open space, so it really doesn't technically exist right now, except on this one plan, which is a recorded one.
Plan was recorded, and it does have it on.
Could you or someone restate where that open space, as it was originally described? Because I don't quite have that...
So if you are looking at your plan oriented the same way with Route 4 here, I've got, I show those two long, narrow lots that come back like that. That's the open space right there, straight out in back of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Not the one to the right of that?
No.
That's the house lot?
No, that's the house lot.
Okay. And the, and the open space is defined by that shape, and which, which kind of works its way over to 202 Rochester Road?
Toward it, yeah.
Yeah, towards that. There's a large wetland back there that it is...
Yeah, it falls just a little short of it, yeah. Okay.
So just one observation question, or whatever you want to call it, keep in mind, I didn't say this at the beginning, you know, all discussions of this is preliminary and not binding on either party. If the idea of the two narrow lots between NECU and the proposed road is to give you frontage on Route 4, that if you're putting in a proposed road, would that not then give you the ability to have a less narrow lot by having one in front and one in back and still accessing it?
Yes.
You might have, I guess, I'm entirely up to you, but...
So we have another, yeah, we have another concept, which I didn't bring.
Okay.
But maybe I'll come back with it, which does just that. It really, the road comes in, you've got a rectangular lot up front with all the frontage, and then the frontage of that lot in the rear would come right off the cul-de-sac. That configuration is great, except the wetlands then become more of a problem on that, and that's why we're leaving it like this strategically, because you can get around the wetlands on these lots. So that's kind of the thinking there, but it could go the...
That's the opposite, but not the engineer.
It could go the other way for sure, and I have that plan in the, you know, back of the office, so. I guess the other thought, just to throw out another comment on the open space, I see that your open space is all about residential subdivisions, and where this is a mixed-use or commercial, mainly commercial subdivision now, with only one residential lot, and really only because there's a house there, you know, do we really need to have open space? Is it really necessary for a commercial subdivision? It says in your regulations that the open space is for residential...
My understanding is, open space, once it's designated, must remain open space into perpetuity. That's my understanding.
And even if nothing was officially recorded, even a verbal statement on the record in a meeting, that, you know, parcel X will be preserved as open faith, open space, is a defensible commitment, you know, on the part of the Board, that it will remain open space?
Yeah, but if, if the subdivision didn't proceed forward as intended with additional residential development, then what's, did we, did they really follow through with the whole thing, so?
Well, no, it was revoked and went back to the previous one, but certainly it's something that could be looked at by the attorney. The other potential is, could that original subdivision be revoked as well, removing the open space?
Yep. And that was all under the same...
That might be another option.
I think I would leave it to the attorneys to figure out the appropriate way forward, and...
Yeah. I mean, yeah, you're right. And, and there's actually, I mean, there's enough land with this, I mean, this lot, the large lot with the house on it being several, like 12-plus acres, that could be reconfigured as additional open space. You know what I mean? So we could reconfigure that, and technically, we could end up with the same amount of open space, just in a reconfigured lot, or even more open space. I guess that's the kind of the question, do we really need to have open space if we're doing a commercial development?
I think we had that question before, so, Linda, the, your remarks all apply to one owner of this entire piece of land? This was all under one ownership when it was subdivided and open space set aside?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
It was.
That kind of...
It was all one parcel.
Yeah.
There was another piece that has been...
There's another small piece that Chris added, that just spoke about. It's the, it's the south westerly corner, that little half-acre lot in the southwest corner there.
It's called the Kennedy lot?
We're not talking about, it's literally just the same land. It's not any of these other things.
No.
But everything that had been part of this subdivision is part of what you're proposing to reconfigure.
Except for that one piece.
But we don't, we don't have a difference in our subdivision regulations between a residential or a commercial subdivision.
Right, right.
We don't.
Okay. Just to ask a separate question, is the, it's the easterly, the most, corner of it, the kite-shaped lot, I guess there's a, it's hard to tell what it is, because I can't read it, that's in the, the corner towards the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
There's a dark spot. What is that? It just, and then that...
This?
This lot right here?
Yeah. Which, where's the dark spot?
Just up here on the very...
Oh, that right there? I don't know what that is.
I didn't know what that was, structure?
Blood puddle.
Maybe it's an ink.
A pile, a pile of dirt or a structure.
Yeah, it could be a pile of...
Okay.
Something.
That's fine. So that lot is the one that you're saying stands as a, what, a residential one?
Commercial.
Commercial was...
The next one...
Would be commercial, okay.
The next one to that, right off the head of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Going way back.
That's...
Going way back, that's the residential.
Widens up as it goes back.
And that's because there's that existing house, can you, if you can see that existing house that sits back there.
Okay, that lot that you, that you did, how many acres is that? Because again, I can't read.
Twelve.
The small kite shaped lot.
Is twelve.
Oh, the small-
The one we were just talking about that has the dark spot in front.
That's four point six, I think it says.
Four point six, and the wetlands then would comprise less than half of that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Another unrelated question and it might be above and beyond the scope of your application, but this would be the time to think about it. You're surrounded by multiple commercial lots fronting on Route 4. You're impacting the Meyer Dentist property. You also have, one of your butters is Family Dollar and the adjacent lot just to the north of that, which I believe that undeveloped, currently undeveloped lot, there is an easement for a drive, shared driveway off of that.
There is, yeah.
If, to my eye and based on what you've said before, if you're looking at a driveway from, for argument's sake, your cul-de-sac to the west.
Yeah.
That, to me, would be an additional emergency egress or emergency access for both properties. For, again, not the idea of commercial traffic or retail traffic coming in as a regular, on a regular basis, but for fire access.
Yeah.
It is not impacted, it's not something you've proposed and I'm not, I guess I'm suggesting it might be some thinking about it, but again, not my call.
So I have that plan at the office, too. It just so happens that-
So my undergraduate degree is coming out.
No, it's fine. Chris owns that property or is at least a personal owner of that vacant property and so. We do have a road sketched in that comes right out through there and that's an, definitely an idea that's on the table, so, yeah.
It's nice being led by the applicant as opposed to having the proposed acquis. Good job.
At least I've done it correctly, right, looking at it.
Yep. Okay, other questions, comments from the board?
Oh, yeah, Bob, I had a question going back earlier.
Sure.
The, you talked about the wetlands. Do they not have an option to go to the state to request a wetlands crossing and stuff? So I mean, it, I mean, I see how they're sort of connected there with just a small spot, but you could fix that by talking to the state, I assume.
Yeah.
And then that would make the, the back area pretty accessible that way. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something there.
Yep. There's, I did mention the large power line easement that goes through there, which does have some restrictions. And then there's also, see that, that spot right in the middle that looks like gravel right there? That's a 100 by 100 square dropped in the middle there, which is a cell tower. And there's a cell tower easement and that access from that driveway, which access is the house is accessed from, also provides access to that cell tower.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't put that on there, but it's a 100 by 100 square right around that gravel area and I was up, and it might show up on this one even, but, yeah. So that is there. So that would stay unchanged, no change to that.
That could be an interesting, let's say, unrelated to this application, but from a construction perspective, having a cell tower within that kind of access or immediate vicinity might limit the number of clients or property owners you could have. Medical might be a little bit tough.
Yeah.
Not my problem.
Why, why would that be?
Just electromagnetic field for sensitive instruments and stuff of that effect.
So I, oh, sorry.
Just a general question, this is obviously kind of a key part of our, our town, Northwoods Downtown, whatever, and I'm sure a lot of people have speculated as to what might go there and what could go there and I just, I don't know if it's appropriate to just kind of, do you have a, any kind of a vision for what, what you want to do there that's going to be good for the town?
I think for right now, we'd like to just get through, I, this is a pretty clean, clean cleanup of that whole area to, to negotiate getting a marketing plan to, to encourage businesses to come there. I think specifically, we've tried to leave as many options open, there's plenty of frontage on Route 4, we're adding road frontage, we have plenty of room to reconfigure this open space and even make the open space better than it was before, because this really had no access to this waterfall area that people seem to like here and, and, and the utilization of this open space through commercial development would be limited to a very small area that Kimberly would like to use for possible parking lot expansion or maybe a, a small addition to her practice. So that would be a good benefit for the town and, and the rest would be left open.
No specific-
No, no specific, I, I mean, this is, right, right now, we're just starting with building a town road, so now everything would have conformant frontages, everything would have conforming acreage. The, the open space could, would be, can be reconfigured to add in space back here because this house is always going to sit there, there's not going to be any residential development back there. It's really just a nice compromising plan to benefit the town for commercial, I would, I would be more than happy to put in to any of this proposal that this would remain commercial so that, I mean, this, this wouldn't be a place for houses anywhere. I mean, I think this, this kite lot, as you called it, could possibly be like, maybe like a, an office where it could be a home business type of thing. The other thing about the electromagnetic stuff that you talked about, I mean, to, to address that, I looked into that a lot and I, I also look around in downtown Portsmouth and, I mean, right in the middle of business district, they're putting these cell towers.
Sure.
And I call the companies and they talk about the direction of the radio waves and, and the actual voltages and, I mean, I live there, I've lived there for two years and I'm still feeling pretty good, except I've got a couple of nervous-
[laughing]
Every once in a while, I go to a planning board meeting and my eyes start to twitch. But other than that, I'm feeling pretty good.
He was talking about interference, yeah, that's another subject, but the interference with instruments, but I, I don't know if that's even-
That's another issue.
Yeah, I have no idea, I mean, I see the towers everywhere, literally, they, they pull one across my, from my camp up in Twin Mountain and it's like, it's like right there in the center of town where businesses are and, and I really, I don't know, I mean, that seems like, you know, people holding those phones right to their head 24/7. I, I don't know. I'd hate to think, I, I, I mean, Kimberly, the tower is literally sitting right, right there from her office and she's never had any issues in it.
So related que, well, maybe not related question, but this subdivision has to do with what's the overall big outline here, correct?
Yes.
So it, it excludes that other separate lot that's next to Family Dollar per se, in the sense that that's not part of the subdivision consideration.
Right.
But it might, as Bob suggested, factor into how you configure what businesses go in there and stuff?
No, it is part of it. So we would do, that would be what I mentioned, the lot line revision, that would be the one lot line revision, because that's a separate lot, so that would immediately, that lot line would be taken away and that half acre would be incorporated into the-
Oh, cool.
Forty or thirty, I forget how, what the total lot area is, but thirty plus acres.
Let's make sure we're talking about the same.
Go through 4 and 202.
I'm, I'm talking about this lot here?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not this lot over here that fronts on, on 202, no.
That's, that's-
No, that's not part of it, that stays separate, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, the other thing is the owner of Family Dollar would have to be in on that, because the easement was actually only granted for singular traffic to this lot with approval. I mean, it's got the, the approval for commercial access, but to this lot only. To travel traffic, I mean, I personally think it would be a great deal for them to divert traffic through, but that's not something we've ever, we've approached them with at this point and Kimberly would also have to be on board with that.
Right.
And I'm sure she would be.
Thinking more along the lines, not so much of, again, of day-to-day traffic, but emergency access, that could greatly affect your insurance rates.
Yeah.
Or acquitted.
Well, I mean, there's going to be, there's all this frontage here, we're eliminating a bunch of curb cuts and then building this really nice entry onto Route 4 with, I mean, there'd be a ton of fire access there, but there.
Yep.
And this would actually, this proposed road accessing this lot would actually reduce, because this house is sitting out here 1,350 feet back, which is against the, the town regulations of a thousand feet off the town road, because this original town road, Bean Road, was, was revoked, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the subdivision was revoked, yeah.
The reason I mention it is that if you're looking at a commercial development of, let's say, a professional office, maybe two stories, I don't know, again, that's above and beyond, if there wasn't a, somebody pulled a fire alarm or there wasn't an alarm, it would be multiple companies responding. Most likely, Northwood would be there first, Nottingham would probably respond, Stratford would probably be coming in from multiple directions. If they are all going in on, let's call it Bean Road, that's one point of access. If Stratford can come in from the back by Family Dollar, then you have multiple access points.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
And that can be impact, I'm facing that with a building project I have at my, during my day job.
I never gave, I never thought of that.
But yeah.
That's something that, just as a suggestion, if you're interested in pursuing that, talk to the fire department. They can certainly, they'll have, if you do propose this, you'll have, they'll have review options for it when it comes up as an application, but might not be a bad idea to talk beforehand, if that's something you want to pursue, not my decision for you.
Yeah, all right.
As this is being considered right now, the, so the, the house, which I, I gather is in the, which I see that dark, we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Existing house. That remains given, access to it will remain as a residential access.
Yeah.
And so that's the, the, what, what exists now is a, I don't know, there's an access road to the cell tower and then it branches off to go to the house.
That's right, right there, yeah.
How does that, I can see where that road overlaps what your proposed road is. Are you going to alter that to come, so that, that road that accesses the house and the cell tower, will that be moved over to the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, will come right off the end of the cul-de-sac and try to go along the property line right there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and just tie it right in. So that would shorten that driveway off, as Chris was kind of stating, by, I forget what the distance of that is, but three or 400 feet out.
Well, when you come in again, I'm, I'm going to want to look at that for the bigger-
Sure, yeah.
Let's let them do it.
Do you want to hear the next?
Looks, that should give you enough to go on.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thanks a lot.
Yep, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is preliminary conceptual consult for Michael Sullivan, Aroma Joe's. He had a well-known face.
We have some right here. We could have one and then, okay.
And I got some small ones too.
Ask the rest around?
Are these the same?
Oh, you've got more. Are those different or is that the same?
Interesting. It might have been a couple of little squeaks or something, but nothing, not so much.
Grab that in, he could have a big one. You and Joe should be sure.
I didn't do that.
Sorry, Gary.
So on the small sets that are coming around, there's an existing conditions plan with that.
That, that was Mr. Struble, the chair that did that, that wasn't me.
No, okay, doesn't matter, anyway.
Okay.
So there's, there's some smaller ones that have an existing conditions plan along with it too, if you want to follow along. So, evening, Scott Frank, it was from Brown Engineering with me, Mike Sullivan, the owner of the property and future owner of Aroma Joe's. The property is located, as you know, right up the road from here. There's a white house on it with a few green, two greenhouses and a larger greenhouse in the back. Attached barn, another small barn shed on the property. It's 2.9 acres, wetlands on it, is all to the north of the property, it's a town, there's a town dry hydrant out there and it's town property. There's no wetland, as you come up the hill from there, there's no wetland on the, on the rest of the property. What we're proposing is an Aroma Joe's with the access coming off of Bow Lake Road. It's 250 feet down Bow Lake Road before you turn into the property. There's an existing driveway, a little bit more north of where we're coming in, but in the same kind of vicinity. The reason we chose the location of the driveway is it comes out into the garage of the abutter across the street, so any lights coming out will, will hit the garage and most of the traffic will be turning left back out to Route 4, so we'll hopefully keep most of the lights out of the abutter's, abutter's house. On the property, as I said, there's two greenhouses, so those, and, and those are in the location, there's three greenhouses, but the two smaller ones are in the location of where the facility will go itself. So those will be coming down and a portion of the, the barn attachment to the house will be coming down as well. So what we're proposing is a two lane, one way around the building, so you come into the site, take a right, you stay in the left lane, go to order, come around the building, pick up on the, on the east side of the building. And then the second lane, if you have to do a bypass, it's there for a bypass. As you look at the plan, you come into the site and you're coming down towards the building. On the right, there's four spaces we've proposed. There is a walk-up window with a concrete pad in the front, they'll have some tables out front for minor traffic, minor foot traffic. And then as you go around the building, there's a loading dock, or loading zone area that we designated on the east side of the parking lot. Continuing out through the site, you'll see the square with a D in it, that's where we're proposing the dumpster, it's all going to be fenced and covered. And then as you head out of the site, to the right, there's a parking lot of nine spaces. That's to service the existing greenhouse that's there and for employee parking for Aroma Joe employees, which would park there and we provided a sidewalk down into the backside of the building. The building is only 800, about 865 square feet. That's a typical, I don't know which one around is, is the exact same building, but-
So in South Sanford?
Sanford.
It's the exact same building.
Which one?
South Sanford.
Stamford?
Sanford, Maine.
Oh, gee, wow.
Yep. So we're, we've sent it out to Sharon Lighting, they're doing the lighting design and a lot of that is controlled by Aroma Joe's, where they want lights and how many lights and types of lights. But the first design we got back was, in the, in the lighting designer's opinion, was very bright, even though it was within regulations, so we're reducing some of the lights, saving some money on lighting. And the wetlands were, were delineated by Fraggle Rock Environment, though Damon Burt. And to take any questions on the actual plan?
Any questions from the board?
So how many, how many cars can queue up?
Mr. Chairman, we, we need to be careful not to get into any of the details.
Oh, yeah, never mind, yeah.
And just, I forgot to mention at the end, that this is a preliminary conceptual consult, nobody's binding on either party.
Just a quick question, the concrete patio area, are you planning to have a nice spot outside that people can sit and enjoy their coffee?
Yes.
How many, is it, is there a room for people to, for many people to sit there or is it just like?
Maybe six or eight seating areas.
Mr. Chairman, I need to interrupt, no, we need to stay out of that.
Higher level.
Yeah, higher up.
Sorry, sorry about numbers.
As it pertains to the master plan.
So high level questions.
Yeah, I'm not sure, the- I'm not sure, the, there's access to the, the building from both sides?
The access for the building would be to the rear of the building for employees.
Actually, let me reset that, just, what I mean is, for drive-up access, it looks like you're, you're passing by a potential window on the, on the near side, and then you're going around the loop and coming, is there another access on that side too?
Yeah, there's the, where you order, the way they do it, because they don't use any intercoms.
You order, and then you go around.
Then you go around.
Okay.
It shows on this side, here, that, yeah, but sure.
Well, it's only one side though.
Well, yeah, but.
I thought Hal's question was appropriate, and I'm going to say why.
Well, it's appropriate, but it's not a public hearing tonight, Joe.
Well, okay. But for our information.
We can't.
What do you mean we can't?
This is a preliminary conceptual as opposed to a design review.
Right.
Okay, well, let me, let me state it a different way.
The question's as general as possible.
Well, this. Have you, have you considered that the traffic might back up?
Yeah, we did do a count, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but yes. We, we've looked at how many cars can queue, and it's, it's quite a few. I can't remember the number.
That'll be our question, you know, we don't want folks backing up on the road.
Right.
Well, and that's relative, obviously, I mean, you can't anticipate exactly how many, but there are estimates of how many customers you have on a especially rush hour, and, and how that might flow through there. And that's obviously a relevant and important question.
And, there have been, at least on my term, time on the board, when Phil Brown put in their Academy Way, there was a good many, we had a good traffic study on that one. I'm trying to remember the date, that's been six, seven, eight years, do you know, Marcia?
What, up the road?
I don't remember the date, I know I was on the board.
You mean the side?
They started, they failed, but anyway, there's a good bit of traffic.
Right.
Information that you can refer to.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's probably when they did all the construction out at that intersection.
Yeah.
Probably, they, they don't, they put a lot of drainage work into that intersection.
But just thinking of, when it comes time to address traffic, you should have a good bit of information available to you.
Okay.
Already, if you want to take, take a look at that.
So, there was, you mentioned something about the existing greenhouses, will that be a, there'll be a greenhouse business there also then, or?
So, currently, I have a thirty-by-seventy-two greenhouse that I do some planting in, from an agricultural standpoint, and I would like to continue that, obviously, because I think it benefits the community and to have that available.
So you'd sell plants out of the greenhouse, or?
So I, I may, at some point, continue that there. It's a, so, the greenhouse's sole purpose is to plant them, so.
No, I'm just trying, I mean, is it, is it gonna be like a nursery operation, or is it just, when, when you grow plants, you might sell them?
Right, correct.
I think the one thing that I would point out is that, now, we're doing a site plan on this, anything that happens on this site is part of that site plan. So if that existing house is going to remain, we want to make sure that the application indicates it's Aroma Joe's and residential. If it's, if there is going to be a business component to that greenhouse, we would want to note what that is as part of the application. If it's just for personal use for you, or for the resident of that house, or if you are the resident of that house, both, we would want to note that. And if it became a business in the future, we would need to, to update that, to amend that.
Come back where it's like.
Right, right, so, I guess, just sort of keep in mind the big picture of everything that's happening on this site, and make sure that if you want to do it now, or in conjunction with your Aroma Joe's, it would need to be part of that site plan application.
And so as proposed, the, this house remains residential, and then Aroma Joe's is the new entity there, yep.
Yeah, I'd just like to bring to the board's attention, as well as the applicant, that I did receive a call some months ago from Mr. Hewitt, one of the traffic engineers at DOT Division Six, and he called to request that the state be, that the planning board consider allowing the state to have input on this, should this go forward.
Had you, at this point, have you made preliminary communication or application to the state as far as driveway and so forth?
This, this, I'll let you speak after, but this wouldn't require a permit from the state, but Mike has spoken with Mr. Hewitt.
So I reached out to District Six, and we discussed the property, and because the property is not on Route four, then the driveway permitting process would not apply to me in that sense.
So essentially, they've asked an opportunity to comment on the application for the board's consideration, but they wouldn't have a regulatory role in this case, that would all be town and Northwood.
That came about because of maybe the conversation that was had by the applicant with Mr.?
I think in part.
Who was it, Mr. Hewitt?
He's an engineer with DOT District Six.
Hewitt, Hewitt, yeah.
So I, I think it's in part just DOT wants to make sure that they can comment if the design were to have, you know, caused traffic concerns for stacking on Bow Lake Road that might impact the intersection with Route four. But I don't think we've received any detailed comments, and, you know, I'm sure whatever preliminary would, yeah. Same thing on their end, they haven't seen a formal application, they're gonna wait until the details are worked out to get their detailed comments.
Okay.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but is it, is it, is it possible to ask why the access is off of Bow Lake Road and not Route four? Just trying to get a sense, because I can see issues with both of them.
This lot's never had access to Route four.
It's never had, and it never could.
No, the driveway's always been on Bow Lake, this one.
Sure, and it never could.
Yeah, it would be too close to the intersection, that would create more of a, that would be closer than the two-fifty.
It would be, okay.
I had reached out to District Six myself, and to get their input.
Yep.
And that is the reason that I think the comment came in to Linda. And one of the primary things that the DOT was looking for is, they recognize that the driveway in the front of the property was really close to the intersection, and they, one of the primary things they, they would like to see is us to move that further down the lot, much further away from the intersection, which we're trying to accommodate that.
So the existing driveway that you have to remain, well, getting too, would essentially serve the house?
Yeah.
At five thousand feet, or?
That's not a ten thousand.
Other questions, comments from the board? The only other thing I'm thinking of would be, well, for myself, you have close proximity to St. Joseph's Church. I would want to take, well, nah, I'll wait, never mind.
They have a great relationship.
Dipping too close. You might have some auditory.
But I did hear Paul, Paul over there, who is the kind of overseer of the property, and we discussed it.
Okay.
And I think that they're receptive to this.
Yeah. Other questions? We'll see you, will you have an application?
Thank you.
And next one, preliminary conceptual consult, is Charlie Zilch from Gulf Road Subdivision. And just another reminder that preliminary conceptual consults are not binding on either applicant or the.
Thank you.
Plaid board. Sure, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else?
Oh, sure.
Do you want to talk to him?
I keep my pocket, I don't, I don't tip it up.
Just in case he gets two fingers off his hair.
Not in case.
You don't need any fighting.
Good evening.
Tell us what you have, or what you want to do.
Yeah, everybody, my name is Charlie Zilch, I'm SDC and Associates. And I'm here on behalf of the property owners, Richard and Ruth Norcross, for just a preliminary discussion for a potential single-family residential streetlot subdivision of the property. The property, as you can see on this plan, is seventeen and a half acre parcel, identified as tax map one-seventeen lot one. The property has about thirteen hundred and ten feet of frontage on the south side of the property, on Gulf Road, which is a class-five town-maintained roadway. It also has frontage on Coal Road, which is on the easterly side of the property, although that's a private roadway. Everybody kind of familiar with the area and know where we are here?
I was just out there this morning.
Okay. So, basically what it is, is the property is currently undeveloped, it's mostly wooded throughout. It appears that perhaps a number of years ago, there was a partial excavation operation on portions of the property, where they removed gravel. You can see that kind of in the southwest corner, the kind of odd topography. And then again, in the back of the property, there was some gravelling back there. But for the most part, that ceased quite some time ago, and the property is revegetated and is pretty much wooded all throughout. Additionally, you can see there's a pretty significant wetland swath through the middle of the property. We had our soil scientist, Tim Forward, go out there and delineate the limit of the wetlands. There's, as I said, a pretty significant wetland complex through the middle of it that runs from the northwest corner all the way, almost basically bisects the property, runs along the backside of Gulf Road. There are two culverts, one under Coal Road and one under Gulf Road, that relieve that wetland complex. There's also another smaller series of wetlands in the northeast corner up near Coal Road as well. As for the remaining upland areas, is there pretty significant areas along Gulf Road, about three and a half acre parcel on the southwest side, and about two and a half acres on the southeast side, and then all the upland area behind the wetlands on the northerly side of the property. The upland areas are pretty well elevated above the wetlands, although we haven't done any test pitting out here, just from my observation, walking through the property, you can see it's gravelly sands and outwashed soils out there. So, the remainder of the property, from what I can understand, there's, there's no limiting overlying districts to say, like prime wetlands or flood hazard areas, where out of the steep slope area, shoreline and the like. So, pretty clean piece of property, just seventeen and a half acres with a good amount of frontage on Gulf Road. So the proposal for the North process is, is pretty straightforward. It's a simple streetlot subdivision, utilizing two-acre lot sizing, minimum one hundred and fifty feet of frontage. So with this existing conditions plan, I applied your, your local ordinances and subdivision regulations, and I was able to come up with a yield above six lots here. As you can see, we've got five of the lots, basically, right up, the building areas right against Gulf Road, and then the remaining, the remainder lot, kind of in the middle of all those, with the buildable area being the rear of the lot. That would be the only lot that would require any sort of a wetland impact for the driveway. There is an existing woods road that runs in between, well, runs through the wetland at the narrow point, but our soil scientist determined that it was never improved far enough above that, that it's not actually wetland, so if we were to improve a driveway through there, it'd be a wetland impact, but minimal at best. All the other lots would be supported by proposed onsite septic well, their own individual driveways, and there's no other wetland impacts associated with any of those as well. Like I said, pretty straightforward, the only other state approval that I would foresee on this is just state subdivision approval. So, this is one of my first times here before this board in a while, and so, I think I have a pretty good handle on the regulations, but I thought before we went any further and did any sort of a formal application, I'd run this by this board, get your concerns, your thoughts, anything that I should be looking out for, be made aware of, and just kind of have you take a look at it for me, and that's why I'm here tonight.
It looks like on proposed, well, of, you might have addressed it, but we have the, let's say, it would have been a corner, or a sharp corner, it looks like that little narrow tag is, deals with a hundred-foot minimum.
Right, oh, okay, you're talking about in this corner, yeah, it's a hundred feet.
Trying to keep it above the ten-thousand-foot view. You're aware of it.
It just so happens to, to achieve the, the one-acre contiguous upland along Gulf Road, that it pushes the frontages out, I know your minimum is a hundred and fifty feet, so most of these are two hundred feet or greater, with the exception of the back lot, which obviously all the buildable area on the, on the back lot is in the back. But I did ensure that every lot has minimally two acres with an acre of upland contiguous. So on average lot size, you're looking at seventeen, slightly over seventeen and a half acres, about three acres per lot, roughly.
Is the access, you said you might consider putting a road through to the back lot?
Just the driveway.
Is it, yeah, thank you. Is there any reason why they couldn't use the road in the back?
Pole Road? You're talking about the T-shaped lot?
Yeah, this one, is there any reason why they can't use Coal Road there? Here's Coal.
My understanding is a private roadway?
Right.
And I don't know what, if we have rights to access that.
Oh, you think, you think the private road is associated with lots other than this?
I do. I know there's an encroachment of Coal Road onto this property.
Well, that's part of why I was wondering.
So I think if we furthered this concept, we would probably capture that with an easement. That was ident, there was a survey done for the previous property owners, and that's when they identified the encroachment from Coal Road, been there for years. So I think we would just kind of clean that up by providing an easement along that frontage for that section of the property.
Is that a Coal Road, and I don't recall, is it two-lane?
Barely. Barely, I was just there this morning.
Quite a few of the side roads here, they have a track all over the place, but the.
I know Coal Road's fairly restrictive, I went down that as well as, as with the chairman.
Yeah.
It's an interesting road.
Yes.
The.
Well, they'd actually have just as far to go in either way. This is more direct, so. I think it requires a permit, but that's their issue, not ours. So your main focus was that getting the one-acre contiguous.
Yeah, precisely, yeah, in the front.
And that's why, like, the third one from, third one in from the west is wider, because?
Yeah, so basically, when I, when I looked at this, in trying to envision what it could produce, or what the yield's gonna be, and so, my task was to, obviously, to get for the maximum yield out of it, without, and one thing I hate doing is, is creating odd-shaped lots, or basically bastardizing the regulations to get a lot. So, as you can see, I tried to do nice rectangular lot. I started from both ends, worked my way in the middle, knowing that I wanted to keep this open to get to the backland. And so that's what drove those frontages, is basically maintaining that acre-plus of contiguous upland.
Yeah. And the back lot has no problems meeting that requirement?
No, it's, it's gonna have all the, it'll have the excess length, so it'll be well above an acre contiguous. Actually, it has four and a half acres.
Any comments from staff?
Yeah, the back lot would require a waiver as an odd-shaped lot. And that would be.
I can't remember the regulation number either, but...
You'd think I would know it by now, I've done it enough.
You've done that through subdivisions, you're forgiven. I think this is what, my third or fourth in ten years or more?
Well, let me ask the question a different way. If the two, just, I'm just throwing this out. If he left the, oh, you need the frontage. I guess I was going to say if you left the, then with just the front, with just, what do you call it, an easement back through, but you need the frontage for this lot.
Yeah.
Well, he wants front to join a public road.
Yeah, so that's what's making it...
Well, I didn't see anything in the regulations that prohibits you from coming in from elsewhere, from where your frontage is, but I would assume if it's not written, usually the assumption is that you need to come in from your qualifying frontage.
No, we would say technically you would have the frontage and you would be able to access as long as you had permission to use the private road. We would say you would be able to get access. That would be three point oh one, paragraph F. To the maximum extent possible, all new lots shall be rectangular in nature. So, you would need a waiver to that. Do you know what the length of that side on the? Isn't a hundred?
This is four hundred.
One point two hundred, that line?
Four hundred, believe.
Six hundred, yeah.
This is a hundred fifty here.
Six hundred maybe, too.
It's just about a hundred feet, that short segment?
Okay.
Is that what you're asking me, the?
Yeah.
It needs to be a hundred feet.
Yeah. As long as you meet that hundred foot, you would be fine there. A note for wetland crossings. A, for the town of Northwood regulations, a paved driveway is considered a structure, an unpaved driveway is not. So, you would need a special exception from the ZBA to impact the wetlands with a paved driveway. If you were putting a driveway that is not a structure to access a single-family home, you wouldn't need ZBA action to go through those wetlands.
Okay. All right, so as long as it's gravel, it doesn't require?
It wouldn't require town of Northwood approval to go through the wetland.
Okay.
The state, would the state though require?
It wouldn't need a state permit.
Yeah, regardless if it was paved or gravelled.
Coal Road is a private road. Is it maintained at all by anybody?
We're getting into the weeds here. Let's wait for the application.
All right. That'll be a later question.
Well, I do know that the property owners don't maintain it. It's not their responsibility.
And James gave you the regulation for the odd shaped lot. The only consideration for potentially accessing the, well, you have it listed as seventeen dash one, or one seventeen dash one. If that was accessed off of Coal Road, you might be able to realign the lot lines.
All right, that's something I can certainly look into.
I would think anything that, unless he was doing things that went all the way back, that anything with that leftover parcel would probably be oddly shaped.
You might have one.
In order to still have the frontage on Gulf Road.
Right, if that's the intent, to have that, if you're looking at frontage on Coal Road, that might give you other options. Questions for the board?
Appreciate the time, thank you very much. Do you want to take the copies back?
Doesn't matter. If you don't want to carry them, you'll have to.
I appreciate it, thank you.
They're recycled. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We have, onto our regular business, case nineteen dash thirteen, Old Mountain Revocable Trust, Revocable Living Trust. We had that, first got to see this two weeks ago. And a lot of proof is getting on the table. So, first up, we need to decide whether we have enough information to act on this for completeness. And I would entertain a motion for discussion if we need to. You have a second? It's a motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin, for completeness, discussion on completeness. Hearing none, although it's in favor of finding a case nineteen three dash three complete. Say aye. Aye. Okay, I'm going to have to read it by hand. Joe's abstaining. Anybody who goes in favor, raise your hand.
I should have abstained.
Okay. So, that's Hal, Betty, Lee, and Chair in favor. Joe and Victoria abstaining. We need reasons for abstaining, and I can guess yours.
Well, actually, I did do my homework on it, so I don't have to, but I just thought it might be polite to do that, so.
And Joe?
I'm just short of information for completeness. I'm just not going to vote one way or the other on it, that's all.
Okay. He just doesn't want to vote on completeness?
Well, because I prefer to have more information at this point than I have, that's all.
That's fair enough.
Okay.
It's simple.
So, we find it complete. I will open case nineteen dash three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering.
Let me, go ahead.
So, the planner had asked for some minor changes. We made the changes, and I would pass them around to the board.
Perfect, go ahead. I'm just going to read the abutters list. No problem at all, saving time. So, I'll read the abutters list. If you're present, please raise your hand and say something, so I know you're here. Mellow Family Trust of two thousand fourteen of Northwood. Town of Northwood. The F and M Walker Family Revocable Trust of Northwood. Weeks Living Trust of Middle Grove, New York. The Phantom Davis Javis, sorry, I'll spit it out yet. The Phantom Davis Joint Revocable Trust of Northwood. Right here? No? Mason Family Trust of two thousand fifteen of Northwoods. Jane E. Thull of Northwood. James and Eileen Hadley. Sorry. I know who you are. That's why I asked to say something and raise your hand, because if I hear something, then I look and know who you are. But otherwise, I'm trying to read names. Seth P. Ailey of Northwood. Tamsin Whitehead of Northwood. Yep. Sean and Rachel Labby of Northwood. And I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, please correct me. Dennis L. and Deborah Wake of Northwood. Warwick Living Trust of Deerfield.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't you go ahead, introduce yourselves again, even though we know your face?
Sure. So, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant here this evening. Joseph Berry from Berry Surveying and Engineering will be doing the presentation here this evening. He's the project manager and project lead for the project. So, unless there are questions that Joseph can answer, I'd be happy to jump in and answer some. We did receive a small request for some additional information from the planner. We took the liberty of adding that to the plans and providing that back to your planner. And then we provided copies here this evening for you. Additionally, and I believe we were one copy short, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Additionally, I don't believe you got one of these either. In support of one of the waiver requests that we'll discuss, Joe took the opportunity to put together a color aerial photo with some additional information on it, so the board can understand the magnitude of the project. With that.
Good evening, board. My name is Joe Berry with Berry Surveying. We're representing the Old Mountain Revocable Trust. They are on tax map two thirty-five, lot thirty-four, which is at the corner of Upper Deerfield Road and Old Mountain Road. It's currently forty-three acres, and we've done a whole boundary survey.
I can do that. So, we've done a complete boundary survey of the whole forty-three acres, and we had wetlands flagged by Fraggle Rock Environmental in the areas of the intensive topographic survey, which is down here on Upper Deerfield Road and up here on Old Mountain Road. We're proposing to subdivide off two five acre lots. One lot has all its frontage on Upper Deerfield Road, and the other lot has frontage on both Old Mountain Road and Upper Deerfield Road. Both these lots meet the town zoning for buildable contiguous uplands and buildability excluding steep slopes. Sheet two in the plan set is just a more in-depth version of the subdivision down at the corner. So, sheet three shows topography, areas of ledge and steep slopes on both five acre lots, as well as the wetlands, proposed wells, potential house locations, and 4K areas with pest pits. On lot thirty-four dash two, we show in state-approved septic design. The applicant had us apply to the state for and received. Sheet four of the plan set is a topographic overview of the whole property. The areas marked intensive topographic survey, we did with survey-level topography. The area out back showing five-foot contours was taken off online resources, just to show the general idea of what the property looks like out back.
Right. Thank you.
One of the staff review comments was, it's kind of hard to see the buildable area for the remaining land up on Old Mountain Road. So, on the newly revised plan set, sheet five is a twenty-scale blow-up of that, also showing areas of ledge, steep slopes, proposed 4K areas, potential house locations, and proposed well and well radiuses. We show one acre of contiguous uplands, which is the requirement for the zoning. There are some wetlands shown, but they're outside of the one acre location of that buildable area. Sheet six is the state-approved septic on lot thirty-four dash two that we prepared to show that you could get a leach field approved in the buildable area. There's plenty of room, but the soils weren't the best, so we wanted to prove that we could build a septic out there, meeting all the state regulations.
Is that a standard design, or is there anything special about?
Pretty standard design. We do show what's called a receiving layer that we have to fill up a little bit. The state just has certain rules about receiving layer over ledge, and we did encounter some ledge down at about three feet, two and a half feet. So, we're proposing to build that up just a little bit to meet the state's rules on receiving layers for the effluent.
So, it's not like anything fancy, no special?
It's an advanced, it's called an advanced environmental septic system?
No. So, this is actually what's called a geomat system. It's, again, nothing too fancy. They've been able to be installed in New England for a decade at least now. So, we do, a quarter of our designs are in these geomat systems. So, there's nothing too fancy about it. We show potential driveway locations for each of the two lots and also the remaining land. So, sheets seven through nine are sightline profiles for each driveway location. Sheet seven is the driveway for the remaining land. We ran into some sight distance issues, but we show some potential grading that could take care of that sightline issue.
Is that because of the curvature in the road?
It's mounted on the sides of the road, there's a steep slope. So...
And just to say, is that on the upper side or the lower side of that lot?
Uh, this is...
As far as the grade of the road going up, is that?
Oh, it's on one of the higher points of the lot.
But versus the house, the current house position?
Uh, the current land is vacant.
Well, you're looking at a different room than he is.
Joe, if you look at sheet seven?
Yeah, I am.
Just?
He may not have gotten a revised copy of the plan set. So, look at sheet eight, or six, I guess. Yeah, so that's the driveway for the remaining land up on Old Mountain Road to the north of the property.
So, it's essentially on the lower side of where the proposed house would be? Is that right?
Right.
The excavation is on lower?
Both sides of the driveway? There's a little bit up the hill, and then there's a little bit more down?
Well, that's what I'm referring to, up the hill or down?
Yeah, there's a little bit on both sides because there's steep slopes coming up towards the stone wall. There's also an old cellar hole that we show grading around, and there's room where that could stay, or if the owner would like that to go, that's a possibility as well. Sheet eight is the profile for thirty-four dash one, which has frontage both on Old Mountain Road and Upper Deerfield Road. We show the driveway coming off Old Mountain Road because that's where most of the frontage is, and that's the best location to access the buildable area out behind the small wetland system here. Again, very minor sightline issues, but we show very minor grading, which would take care of that problem. Sheet nine is the driveway location and sight profile for thirty-four dash two on Upper Deerfield Road. This road's flat and straight, so there were no issues with sightline profiles. So, that one's pretty straightforward. There were a couple staff review comments that we addressed on the revised plan set. The first one was fire resources. I talked to the fire inspector in the town of Northwood, and he said there were fire resources in the general area, and he thought no further resources would be required for this project. That was taken over the phone on April twenty-third, and it's been added to both sheets that will be eventually recorded with the Registry of Deeds in note fifteen on sheet one and fourteen on sheet two. The second staff comment was the hundred scale plan of the remaining land seemed a little too convoluted. too convoluted, so we added the 20-scale cut, showing that in more depth. The other one was to show topo, yeah, topography on the remaining land using online resources so they would look more favorably upon the waiver request for a full topographic survey. And that is now added onto sheet four.
Just my edification, because we asked this a few times. How difficult is it to do that, to add the PPS data using the online data sources?
For us, it's not that difficult. We, all of our survey work is geo-referenced. For some surveyors that don't have the ability to geo-reference their work, it could be more difficult. For us, I'll bet you maybe seven minutes?
Uh, yeah, if that...
So, well, because I'm, we're trying to determine whether that's a reasonable request or not.
Well, you know, we, we do some large-scale projects and we do smaller-scale projects, but we treat every project the same. And so every project, using our GPS, we put every project on the state grid and the state datum. And using a Google 10 or a NOAA 10, we're able to produce that type of information. But for some, some surveyors, that's just not in their realm of capabilities.
Okay, so that's something we should ask them when we, you know...
Not really. I don't think it should be asked. I think it's more a matter of what we need to...
See.
Decide is, is the, Mr. Berry can produce geo-referenced GIS data that, is that your accuracy? I don't know what, within, within a meter? Probably something to that effect. I think, based on conversations you, we've had at the board level, the idea is not to show the accuracy of the elements, it's to show what elements exist. And as long as the board accepts that the placement of those on the lot may not be very accurate, but they still show the existence, that's what we're going to accept. And that is a kind of thing that almost any surveyor should be able to do, because they can just print out Google Map and say, "This is what it is, this is what I'm finding." For the, if you want to show existence of something, not necessarily accurate location, that should be fine.
Yeah.
But that shouldn't impact us in this application.
That was the last of the staff review. We have four waivers we're asking for. The first one is the driveway for 34-1s within 100 feet of the intersection of Upper Deerfield Road and Old Mountain Road. We took the measurement from the edge of the proposed driveway to the extension of the edge of pavement on Upper Deerfield Road, and we came to 92 feet. We're using the edge of pavement because there's no definition of intersection, and this intersection's misaligned. And we thought using the edge of pavement would give the road agent and contractor something reliable to pull a tape measure from and confirm the location.
And just for the board's context, this is a new waiver request. Kyle Pimental helped me out this month and did the initial review of this one, and then he and I reviewed it together. He caught that and noted it, and I think I fat-fingered and deleted that from the staff report when I was making the last pass. So I followed up afterwards, and the applicant submitted that on my request.
That's why it's not on here then?
Right. Because I'm a dummy.
The next waiver we're asking for is to show topographic survey data on the whole remaining property. That's the reason we show the online-resourced topo.
So I'm clear about this? The orange lines are delineations of...
Yeah, I'll get to that right now.
Okay.
The next waiver we asked for was for a high-intensity soil map. We provided you a websoil map, which is in front of you. So the orange lines are what websoil determined was the soil types overlaid onto the property to show roughly what's on the remaining land. You can see a couple of large swamp areas and then some other soil types out there. The last waiver we're asking for is wetlands and natural feature on the whole site. To do a full wetland survey on their 43 acres, it didn't seem to impact this subdivision at all, so we're asking a waiver for it. And the staff review had mentioned showing wetlands off the online resources as well, but we didn't want to misrepresent what's on the property and what's not on the property by showing online wetlands. So we, that, we provided the soils map that you can kind of see what's wet, but there's probably small pockets of wetlands out there, like any piece of property. And with that, I turn it back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from board? Or town staff? Don't all speak at once.
Okay. They did everything we asked.
Okay, so we got the note for the firefighting.
And Rich, the fire inspector said, "If you have any questions, feel free to give him a call and he can answer any of the board's questions."
So, do you feel...
Only, I'm going through my medal list, and the only one that I know of in that area is at the top of Old Mountain Road, the Beaver Pond by, whatever their name was, they just moved.
Leyland.
Pardon me?
Leyland. Leyland.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Leyland.
Yes.
They just moved.
Right. I know they just moved. I could see it in my head. Tying the name to the place is something that takes me a bit. Is there any, I don't know, are there any, are there any on Upper Deerfield or Lower Deerfield Road firefighting, like dry sumps or wet sumps that anybody knows of? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Just, it's not a road I go down very often. We'll get to public comment in a bit before we make, I like to have the board answer any questions first, then we'll open up to abutters and then non-abutters for public comment. Okay. Well, I'm a bit stymied. Your typical completeness is shows. I'm not that stymied, I should say, that's not... Usually there's at least some discussion. Okay, at this point...
Let me just clarify.
Sure, go ahead.
You were mentioning the, what source of water, is that why you referred to the Leyland property up at the top?
Right, just the firefighting. We have a testant from the...
Well, even closer is, is the pond down below, so I would guess easier to access.
Lucas Pond?
Oh, Lucas Pond? Sure.
And easier to access.
Yep.
Anyway, so it's, it seemed to me it's not a, it doesn't present any issues there.
I wasn't saying it was, I was just curious, going through my head as to what's where. So, okay, at this point, I will open public comment on this application. We'll extend first opportunity to abutters if you'd like to speak. You're welcome to do so at this time. All I ask is that you pass the mic to them if they want to speak, and just state your name for the record, please.
My name is James Warwick, and I'd like to know where you're going to put the water?
The well?
The water. No, the runoff water, that, those lots are wet. And I have three culverts, uh, two culverts on my property.
And which property are you just?
219 and 227. And they're at their max. That 219 one won't take anymore.
Say, say your name again, please. I want to look...
Warwick.
Warwick. They're just south.
Oh, opposite. Okay. Thank you. When you're talking, just to clarify, runoff water?
You've got it right.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's still up there. It hasn't been up there in many years, but there used to be a beaver dam up there.
Okay.
And the last few years, there's a 12-inch culvert that comes under the road, and it runs full culvert.
Under, under Deerfield Road?
Up at Deerfield Road, yeah. And it, and it comes into my front yard, and then it goes into another culvert, which goes under my driveway. And then there's another one in front of 227 that runs under the driveway and all the way to the back of the lot is a culvert.
Now, you're thinking that there will be more runoff? Is that why your question is?
Yeah, more, more runoff, because that, and another concern I have is my wells. If they plan on blasting to put in foundations, I get, I think the only two wells on Upper Deerfield Road that do not require filtration. All my neighbors have filters, all of their wells. If you, if you get a glass of water and set it on the counter and wait three hours, it looks like orange juice. Minor clean.
A little, a little iron out there. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, like I said, minor clean. I'm just afraid of blasting. If it opens up a vein, you could wreck those two wells.
Oh.
But my, another concern I had, after thinking about it, was I haven't been up there, like I said, in years, but it's pretty wet back in 2001.
One of the, just to address that, one of the regulations is any water that is on the land has to stay on the land after, before it's modified and after it's modified.
I think the better way to phrase that is the amount of water that flows off of the site can't increase as a result of the culvert.
Right. Well, that was my concern. If the town comes up and says, "Don't handle the water," and they put in a bigger culvert, I can't put in a bigger culvert on my site because I'm right on ledge. There's no way I could possibly handle the one under my driveway because there's no more rock.
Is that culvert shown on the, that goes under Old Deerfield, or Upper Deerfield Road? Is that shown?
Thank you. I don't...
Yes. If you see it on page, on the septic design, page six, and maybe...
Page, sheet six is which sheet?
It's the septic design. You can just see the tail end of it. So this wetland comes down and crosses on page three, the topographic survey of the two lots. The culvert's right here, it's under this utility pole label.
Okay.
And it comes down right at the edge of this wetland and crosses just past our property corner.
Okay, but then his driveway is further south, is it not?
Yes.
About four feet.
Is that all? Oh, I'm, then I'm not catching your driveway here.
A little bit on that.
Where, where's your dr, I don't see, I, I see a driveway here with your name here.
Okay, well, I own two lots, so we've got...
See, and he said the, he said the culvert is like right here.
Okay, I have a driveway, distinct driveway here, and there's a, there's a culvert right there.
Right here.
Look, this way, this way, under, under, under Upper Deerfield Road.
Oh, under the road?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, well, now, I'm not seeing that one.
And then here.
Culvert?
And here, this driveway.
So you can kind of just see the tip end of it on the septic design. This wetland system comes down, and there's a culvert crossing the road right at the edge of that wetland line.
I think we're talking two different places. Or, or maybe we're confusing where his driveway is. When you're helping out here...
This is my driveway, ready.
Yeah, but see, what, what he's showing here is, here's the stone...
Let's do off the big one.
Okay, so he's showing the stone wall there, right?
Right, so here's Upper Deerfield Road. For the septic, all you can see is the one edge of pavement closest to our site.
Right.
Here's our property corner, and there's a wetland system that comes down on the abutting property.
And goes under a culvert there.
Right, and the culvert is just to the northeast of our property corner.
Okay, so what I think he's saying, though, is if I look on this drawing, he's saying his driveway is across from the house.
I own, I own two lots, huh?
Oh, maybe we're confusing those.
I own two lots, so this would be...
Who's we?
Who do you dress up as?
Uh, he might be thinking the second lot, maybe.
It's going to be this one. This lot? Yeah.
So it's further down?
Right, so the driveway he's speaking of is further to the northeast of what our property corner.
Than what your drawings show.
Out here, they used to be, and he said it's been, I can't remember what's been here. The guy that lived in the old, the apartment, so you can walk it up quite a bit, those were, they used to be down there.
They're still there.
The beavers are still there. Well, I'm just concerned that if more water gets dumped, it's the culverts that are along there. The ones I have under the, under the driveways. At 227, it runs from the road all the way to the back of the lot. At 219, it runs. I'll show you, but it comes out, it's under the driveway. It goes between 219 and 227.
I'm not sure, are you able to address that?
Just so I can maybe understand a little, where did Bob go home? Mr. Warwick, how would the lot, which is the, how are we calling it? Northeast, or the one at the, the first lot?
Yeah, the north end of this lot.
Number two.
Is where that culvert is.
Okay, but how would any activity on the, this, the lot that were being proposed, would it, how would it affect the water flow, which is apparently from my, what I'm gathering here is a beaver dam you're seeing off in this other property that's adjoining that?
No.
That's often on beaver dams come and go, but the, but just that water would, how is that going to affect, anything they do on that building a house or whatever, how is it going to affect the other lot, though, which...
Well, it, it runs off of their lot onto, into that culvert.
Is the beaver dam on the lot here, where your hand is right now?
It's on, it's on your property, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the beaver dams here, if they break that down and let it go, say...
Okay.
Then what's going, what's going to happen is it's going to flood me out in the front.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a, there's a basin there. The culvert comes under the road, and there's a basin, and then it goes under my driveway and goes between the two lots.
Are you concerned about just normal runoff, or are you concerned about if the beaver dam has changed?
Well, if, if they start dumping water off of these other wetlands to dry them up and start pouring them into here, then the culvert is not going to handle it.
But I, I don't know that that's really the house plan, is it?
No, I can, I can address this if the board would like.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think maybe better.
So there, there are some simple things that we can do. So the gentleman's correct. We're proposing development basically on top of two knolls.
Yeah.
So the water's either going to shed to the back into the wetland, which then comes down to the culvert, or shed to the front and come in the street and do the same thing. And so there are some low-impact development design things that we can do to the, to the house designs and the grading of the lots to make sure that no increase in flow happens. So we could do a simple drip edge, just simple swaling around the driveways to retain some of the storm flow on site. And I think those could be handled with just some, we typically handle them with just some simple notes on the plan that talk about that type of infrastructure. As it is, we're building these lots up a little bit, so we're going to be bringing fill onto the site, and so that fill can be used to basically grab and attenuate storm flow.
Yeah, my only concern is the, the culvert that's at 219, when, in the spring of the year, that runs full culvert. And it can't take anymore, so it'll come over the road.
Where does that water go when it, after it goes through, it goes on to your, it goes through the culvert going downhill and it goes on to your land?
It goes onto 219, under that driveway, back towards 227, and then between the two lots, and it runs out through the back, ends up in Lucas Pond eventually.
Hmm. Yeah, I guess that's... So that's a, that's a, a come-and-go water flow depending on rainfall and so forth?
Yeah.
And you say that culvert couldn't be improved, as far as you can tell?
Well, it, under the road is a 12-inch culvert.
Yeah.
I have a, I forget what size I put under my driveway. I think it's a 14 or a 15, but you can't go any deeper because it's on ledge. I had to break all the ledge with the jackhammer to get that one in, and I only have six inches of culvert, so I can't put a bigger one in. So if the water starts coming over the road and the town says, "Okay, we need to put it in a bigger culvert," I can't handle it. My culverts won't handle it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I do, I mean, other than, I, I think side by side when you're saying that, two culverts, but I mean, that's, I mean, I just wonder if there's a, you know, a way or two to solve maybe, maybe a problem, I don't know. Well, Chris, Chris is saying, I mean, James said that the requirement is, and we've had this before, you can't increase the flow off your property.
Right.
Yeah, always.
The flow off land has to be the same as before you built it.
We do it all the time. We, on the Seacoast, we do this on almost every lot that's developed.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, my only concern is, like I say, I know in the spring of the year, it actually sometimes comes... it actually sometimes comes over the road because that culvert cannot handle anymore. And so I just, you know, wonder if they're gonna, you know, trench into it and dump what's on the lots into that culvert, it's not gonna handle it.
I think, I think my only question would be, Bob, you know, it sounds like just the way it is now, maybe sometimes it's unacceptable, but how would we make sure, you know, that he has, that we're fair to both people in the sense of making sure it's, you know, not a problem in the future? If it floods, you know, two years from now, after we approve this, you know, he's gonna come and say, well, you know, it happened just as I told you, and, you know, somebody else will say, well, no, it's global warming and we just had more rain.
How do we know the beavers are gonna do the right thing?
Hal, your, your spectrum of options as a board would be, because the requirement is they can't increase it as a result of development, and they have to meet that, so your suite of options would be to have a, a note that's a condition of approval that says they will do appropriate design to ensure that the flow doesn't increase, all the way up to you could ask to see a plan for what they intend to put in and where, um.
You mean on the house design?
For what stormwater infrastructure they would intend to put in and where, um, and how they intend to maintain it. So it would be a matter of what this board is most comfortable with, if you're comfortable with a note that will, that the applicant will go through a couple of options and will install whatever's most appropriate based on the site, you know, that's what you can go with, you could go with more detail and wanting to see what they plan to do and where they plan to put it.
But then we'd have to know all the details, like where the house is going and stuff, and I don't want to get into that.
And that's a subdivision, not.
Which will, which will inevitably change.
Right.
Right.
Jim sells meet the law and Joe the law.
Uh, Northwood is a pre-approval septic town, so you will see a septic design come in when these lots get built on, and the building inspector reviews them and approves them.
Yeah. Well, I think he has a legitimate concern, but Chris says he knows how to deal with it.
This is a concern, this is a concern.
Yeah, it's a concern everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. And that's not, that's not to undermine his concern, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but you do.
We work in a lot of towns.
And there's a difference between subdivision, which is largely lot line existing conditions versus construction, which we're not dealing with tonight, and it's not belittling your concerns, which is why we have this public hearing, but.
Yeah.
When, it's really when the rubber meets the road that you're actually out there with the backhoe, um, where you get into construction. Okay, sorry, Victoria, you start the same.
And for the blasting comment, on the septic design, we show the house is being built up above the ground, so no actual blasting should have to take place in isolated areas, they may have to scrape some rock down, but everything's built up above any potential ledge.
Yeah, I'm kinda weary on those, those two wells I have.
Yeah.
And this is my wall from those wells. And my neighbor takes his out, puts it in glass, puts it on the side of the sink, and it turns orange in two hours, and he's like, how do you get away with it?
You're like.
Well, one's down six ninety, the other one's down seven twenty, and I think that's why I, I do have good water at those two houses. Yeah, most of the other.
Do we have notification for blasting requirements in town?
They're not gonna blast. They're not, they're not blasting them.
Well, the only other potential blasting that could occur to the drilling well, that's kind of unlikely here.
Pre-blast survey requirements, or pre-blast survey requirements.
Okay.
Typically, you have to notify the fire department, you do a pre-blast survey.
Okay, so not necessarily neighbors?
No, yes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, they, they send out notifications to the butters and, and any butter that wants, um, foundations filmed and photographed can, can.
Okay.
Um, and they do pre-blast surveys for wells.
Did you hear that, Mr. Warwick?
Uh, I did, I think, yeah.
Okay, if, uh, if for some reason, obviously you addressed the idea of, of, not playing with any blasting, but if for something, some, something comes up during construction, uh, you are on the notifying list that if they do have to blast, uh, you would serve, be given notice in advance. Okay.
And the advantage that was being expressed here is that if you have some issue you think could come up, or something you're watering, if you can, at that point, notify, certify that that's what you're concerned about, and then, then there's the aftermath of the blasting that would say whether something has been affected or not. I mean, that's the whole point of that.
Well, I, I just, those are my only two concerns, and I figured I'd come up and.
Yeah.
Sure.
No.
No, and, uh, I mean, for our concern, I didn't do anything I want, but, uh,
Okay.
My issues were both in the water.
As I observed before, isn't this a little bit up to the beavers?
Well, because the drive process fluid flooded out his back, his backyard there. And I actually went over there and helped him, and we broke it down, but we took it down a little at a time to drain it, so that it didn't flood out the road and flood out my property. We, we pulled off a few sticks with my excavator a little at a time, just to drain it.
Yeah.
Until his backyard straightened out, and I didn't know if the beavers were even there, but if, I'm saying, I think I'm building here, if someone comes along and just rips that thing out, we, we got a problem.
Okay. Okay, any more comment? Okay, so the butters have had a chance to speak, I'll open the public comment to, or, sorry, one more butter, my apologies.
Sometimes in Whitehead, um, butter, I'm directly across the road from the property.
Where are you, Vanessa?
So the upper property, the property on, further up the lot property, the upper acre property, so I'm directly across the road from where that property is going to be.
What's your name?
I'm one of one old mountain road, my name is Nancy Whitehead.
Oh, okay.
You might, you're under the additional butters. Do you do space in the plan, we gotta put additional butters in a list format and not where they actually go in the plan?
Yep, so we just start.
So where, where is her property?
She's over here.
I don't see a driveway there.
So, I'm here.
Okay, just above the intersection.
No, this is not right. Because I would always start the office here. One of the things showed her driveway right across from.
Sure, the cellar hall, do you know where the cellar hall is?
Yes, I do know, that was gonna be one of my questions.
So there, this is the cellar hall up the.
No, this is the one on Upper Deerfield Road, right?
Yeah, this is Upper Deerfield.
So.
Oh, so you're further up?
Yeah, I'm at the, the one on the thirty-three acre, that's what I'm trying to say, I'll tell you, yes.
So here's the cellar hall, and then we have two driveways.
Right, and this one. So I'm directly opposite where the, the house is going to be, yep.
So where we are, towards thirteen, that is up in this location here, across from the billable area we show.
So my question, um, I'm not sure within the purview of this, but I'm just sort of curiosity, um, the septic system, the design of the septic system, is it one where the, um, the, um, affluent and so on flows down into it, or is it gonna be pumped? So you're going to be regrading, so you said you're, the septic system, you're gonna have to grade up a little bit, so the house will be even higher on grade, because the land drops off. So are you going to be changing the grade towards the, the back where the house is quite a lot?
You, you were previously talking about the other lots, weren't you?
Right. There could be potential grading for the house, we have not designed a septic system for this lot. We got, um, almost a four foot seasonal high water table on one of these test pits, so the leak field's gonna be pretty low in the ground, or on top, right on top of the ground, depending what type of system we use. There will be some potential grading, we do not do a site design to see house elevations or septic elevations, we just show a suitable house location and suitable septic location.
And that's the requirement for subdivision regulations, is to show four thousand square feet where septic is suitable and, uh, potential driveway.
Okay, thank you, yes, as I said, I'm not, I didn't actually go through this part myself, so.
Oh, so that's, that's her driveway right there.
Yeah.
So, and also I just wondered if you could confirm something, because I wasn't quite sure if I caught it properly, but you're saying that the, um, existing historic foundation for the cellar that's there on the property could be removed in order to extend the driveway entrance?
We, we've designed the site so that it doesn't have to be removed.
But you did say something about that you thought you might have to extend the driveway to, and you might move that?
No.
You might have to remove that? That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, the comment was just simply, what somebody does with it in the future is, is kind of up to them, it's on their property, but the construction drawings that we show don't require that it be removed.
Okay.
So somebody could work around that, um, and we, we can show that we can get a driveway in and a house without any removal of it.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's the questions that I have within what's happening here. I do have some interest in sort of what's happening to the property in general, but I don't know if that, you know, sort of long term for conservation or something like that, because it is very interesting.
You're allowed to, it's public comment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm Diana Anderson, further up Old Mountain Road, and I have a question for clarification, when you talked about the fire, if there were a fire, will water be extracted from the Beaver Pond or from Lucas Pond? Because that Beaver Pond is a very special area, and I would hate to see water extracted from that for a fire.
I couldn't answer that, but there is a dry well, or a, uh,
Dry hydrant.
Dry hydrant, thank you, on the, uh, Lelish, or the property, the Beaver Pond by the, what was the Lelish property, and I think there is one on Lucas Pond as well.
So that would mean it would not be extracted from that Beaver Pond?
No, if there was a fire, it would be.
It's only temporary, the water re, reclaims its previous position, I mean, a fire truck can take very little water and very little of that pond.
I hope, I hope, because that would be a shame to, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful.
Sure, it would be, well, you wouldn't want the house to burn.
No, but.
I don't think you're, uh, based on the size of the Beaver Pond around the Lelishes, you might impact the height, water height by maybe a quarter inch.
There's a lot of water up there.
There's a lot of water up there, that's, that's multiple acres of.
That's one of the heavy waters in the Lamprey River.
Right.
Yeah, that's not gonna run out.
It's not, I don't think you're gonna impact it by much, any, no, less than a windstorm would produce waves, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it too much. Lucas Pond is the same, you're talking acres of, of acre feet of water.
Yeah.
But thank you for your question.
Hundred thousand trucks.
Other public comments? Going once, going twice. I'll close public comment at this point in time, subject to reopening at the, if need be. And if you pass the mic back to someone, uh, oh, you got it already, good enough. Oh, Gary, Gary's doing a good job, he's got both of them going. Okay. What's next? I will express some, one of the things I am a bit concerned over, or I'd sort of like to see, I think that I addressed this with you a little bit, is that, there's the overview. Let me, well, go ahead, James, if you wanna speak, go ahead.
So, from the discussion that we've had so far, I have a tentative, suggested additional condition of approval, uh, with some minor changes to the plan set, one being to ID and label all culverts within a hundred feet of the property, um, just to make sure they're all called out clearly, and then, uh, the second part of that would be to add a note describing the proposed stormwater controls for the site.
Okay, I would like, subject to approval, uh, to add to the culvert's, uh, list of driveways and graphical denotations of a butter's property somewhere on the existing conditions, even as just saying, you know, here's butter number one, land's going here. It's difficult to tell who is exactly where, uh, on the land.
We've done that before, A, B, C, and then certain A, B, C.
Sure. That would add some clarification. Okay.
Your, which your, your comment there was just a reference of the butters' list with a, some designation, some, like, a letter or a number for the given driveway and the property itself, yeah, just to make it clear.
In specific, you know, some kind of lot line indicating, you know, a butter number one, driveway number one, if their driveway exists, or, um, others, what is it, I think it's, uh, regulations or structures within a hundred feet.
So, let me read what I've got back. So total changes to the plan set, ID and label all culverts within one hundred feet of the property, add a note describing proposed stormwater controls, uh, ID and label all driveways within one hundred feet of the property, and denote approximate location of all butter properties with labels.
Okay with that? I'm getting head nods, but just wanna double check. I recognize I'm chair, but I'm not the sole decider.
No, it's good. All right.
Okay. Okay, are we?
Yep.
Ready to address waivers? Yep, okay, gonna get nods. So I would entertain a motion to, for a waiver, and I'll do, as James has pointed out, his waiver requested number one, sections four ten B, one B, four ten B two, and four ten B five, not to show topographic data, soil types, boundaries, and other significant natural and made, man-made resources.
We're moved.
Second.
Uh, question, is that subject to condition adding a note if it's approved? And a note be added to the plan identifying the requested waiver and date of approval?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Excuse me, Bob, I'm, sorry to interrupt you, but I don't quite grasp, the waiver's to not show topographical data, but I thought that you did have it.
Not to show survey grade, topographic data.
Okay, well then let's be, let's be specific.
Right.
And you did show the soils too.
We do that in an effort to bolster, we do that in an effort to show the board the information that they otherwise would use to make an informed decision.
Right.
Right.
But we acknowledge that it's not survey grade information.
So then let's specify the, because they are showing the data, it's just not survey grade.
I, I think another point of clarification, my understanding is the applicant intends not to submit this as part of the plan set. This is before you, tonight, for information purposes, but this won't be in the staple pack if it gets signed.
Why not?
There's no reason it can't be though.
Why not, it shows the soils and stuff, I mean, again, it's best we can.
That's a request that other people have made to have any of the GIS data outside of their stamped plan set, just because they're concerned that if they're putting their stamp on it, they're. they don't want people confusing what's GIS and what's surveyed.
I talked to the land surveyor about that, and he said he wouldn't mind having that information put into the plan set. We would just put a note on that plan that says this was taken from websoilsurvey.com.
We've done that in the past as well.
Yeah, okay.
Disclaimer for the accuracy. For your accuracy.
Yeah, and that's not to discount what James is saying. But I think, you know, a lot of times, you know, when we're looking at other plans and stuff, sometimes we look at the adjoining ones. And if we have this extra data, it's helpful sometimes. So I'd like to see us included if we can.
Well, we can.
Not a problem.
Okay. So what I suggest... How we do that? Change the motion to include a note saying not to include survey-grade topographic data, soil types, and boundaries?
Well, you could just say that the topographic...
We could say instead of to not show topographic data, soil types, and boundaries, to accept GIS depictions of...
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
It's not a waiver then, is it? Is it a waiver?
It would still be a waiver because we require survey.
So how would it be worded? So it's...
Give me a sec.
And I'd like... I'd add the words on the whole lot somewhere. Because that's really what they're asking for a waiver for.
Remain in parcel.
Sorry.
Remain in parcel, yeah. I like that wording.
All right. What I have written is waiver to those sections to accept GIS depictions of topographic data, soil types, and boundaries, and other significant natural and man-made resources in lieu of survey-grade data for the remaining parcel.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, is the motion? Second, okay with that language?
So moved.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed abstaining? Okay.
And then I would say the short version of the second waiver is a waiver to section 3.03, paragraph A3, to allow the driveway to be located approximately 92 feet from the edge of pavement of the driveway to the edge of pavement of the intersection where 100 feet is required.
Motion?
Subject to adding a note.
So moved. And we're doing that, just to clarify. We could go to center, but we're doing that for more precision as far as future...
Yeah, I thought as far as setbacks go, the edge of the driveway was the better way to measure it because technically a part of... If you went to the centerline, part of the driveway would be closer than 100 feet. So I told the applicant, yeah, there were a couple different options we could go with. I told them the proposed one that made the most sense for a contractor in the field. And they suggested edge of pavement of the driveway to edge of pavement in the intersection, which I think is fine.
Yeah, and I do, too. The... I'm just bringing it up again. Should we refer to the fact that we're doing that for ease of use? Future...
I think as long as we know what the measurement is and what the measurement points are, and describe it in the notice of decision, that somebody seeing that should be able to tell how close they're allowed to get.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, that's to the extension of the pavement? There's a radius that's breaking apart and whatnot? So it'd be to the extension of the straight line of the pavement?
Is 90 feet, 92 feet to the extension of the pavement?
Yes. Because there's no real edge of pavement because it's got the radius that's falling apart.
Okay.
Words clear on how that works?
I haven't been on site. All I've seen is your nice neat corner on the survey.
I'm so moved that we...
Okay.
...to see it on that.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. B. Smith. Motion by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion on that waiver. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining? Okay. Okay, so you have your waivers. One of the conditions for approval would be to add notes to that granting of waivers. We have...
Well, this gentleman wanted something to confirm. What'd you say, Chris? Something about the flow off the house and stuff?
We did three in one.
You need a note or something to...
Yeah, we would add a note to the plan that future builders or developers of the lot would install low-impact development design features to mitigate any flow off of the property. And I'll expand the note to give examples and the use of sediment erosion controls during construction. So that it leaves opportunities, but it's clear. The intent is clear.
Okay. So how do we word that?
I have worded it, add a note describing the proposed stormwater controls, but I can flesh it out if you want me to.
How about low-impact design?
Yeah, I kind of like that.
Or, well, actually, Mr. Perry can use the language.
The proposed low-impact design elements?
Because that can cover more than just stormwater.
Yeah, okay. Also moved on that waiver.
Okay, we're not there yet.
That's not a waiver.
We're not there yet. That's not a waiver. That's conditions of approval. That's conditions of approval.
Do you want me to run through the whole list?
Yes, please.
All right.
Are we at that point? Any more questions?
I think we addressed all the...
I think we addressed...
So recommended conditions of approval prior to signing of plans. Number one, make the following changes to the plan set. Identify and label all culverts within 100 feet of the property. 1B, add a note describing the proposed low-impact design elements. 1C, all ID and label all driveways within 100 feet of the property. 1D, denote approximate location of all of our properties with labels. Number two, the applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town except as specifically denoted below. This shall include but is not limited to a town of Northway driveway permit for each lot. Number three, provide certification of monument installation as required by section 3.06 of the subdivision regulations. Number four, deliver... I've been putting this as three signed and stamped copies, but what we really want is three paper and one mylar?
Do you want a PDF?
Yes, that would be good, too.
Deliver three signed and stamped paper copies of the plan, one signed and stamped mylar, and a PDF for our records. Then conditions prior to issuance of the building permit. Number five, record the plat with the Rockingham County Registry of deeds within one year of this decision. Number six, provide a state-approved septic design for lots 34 and 34-1 prior to issuance of a building permit for each respective lot.
James, you missed me on that last one there. Aren't there three lots here?
We already have a design on file for 34-2.
Oh, okay, you're counting ours.
That's included with your plan set.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
To approve.
With conditions as stated by Mr. Perry.
19-3, with conditions as stated. Thank you. Let's be clear. So motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. McCaffrey. Okay, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining?
See you all again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Jim and Gary.
Thanks for coming in.
No, I have this out of my... Well, it was actually several weeks ago, Joe.
Okay.
So Jim, I assume you're taking the 33-acre lot?
I'm familiar with that. Yes. Just as a reminder... Don't leave, Jim. Don't let it out the door. Just as a reminder, we are short for alternates. If someone is so interested in participating in some method to...
Pop, pop.
Your design reviews have to be a little bit shorter. Oh, no, we need to be...
Yeah, we're working on that. We got... This is the... We've never had three before in one month.
I will consider it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We... Send me a note. Thank you.
See you later, Jim.
Okay, next case, 19-4. Jessica Hosfeld, excuse me. Old Turnpike Road. You picked a busy night. Apologize for making you wait. We haven't been... It's been a while since we've had a meeting this long. Thank goodness we had to continue it since.
Well, I apologize because I only have three copies.
Oh, that's... It's okay. We can share.
I got one from last time. Is it the same?
It is the same.
Or is it new and improved?
We've seen them all.
Yeah, it just has more writing on it.
Well, okay, Joe and I'll share.
You can give them to the board members.
Oh, man, there's a lot more on this.
I was missing some things last time.
Just a few things.
Okay. Before we... You can launch. Let me launch. I'll call case 19-4. And I'd entertain a motion for completeness.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Smith, B. Smith. Second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion on completeness. Anything anybody wanted to see that they haven't seen already? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining? Okay. I will open case 19-4. And as soon as I get to the butters list, if you are in a butter and you are here, please both say something and raise your hand so I can point you out. David Pelletier Construction. That is not your contractor, is that correct?
He does.
It is your contractor, okay.
Well, yeah, he's the seller.
Okay. Okay, Anthony and Jessie Mattress. They're not here. Town of Northwood is here. Bridge Road Properties. Bruce DeTrude of Northwood. Dylan and Christine West of Rochester. And the applicant. Okay. Hearing none. Welcome. I'm guessing you're Jessica.
Yes, I am.
I am Jessica.
Well, you could be.
Hey, well, let's not get into that discussion.
Why don't you introduce yourselves? I should be more...
I'm Craig Hosfeld.
Welcome. So you want to put in a two-person clinic? Clinic, whatever office, commercial space?
So actually, it's me and two people. We currently work down the road, and we want to use two of the bedrooms as offices.
Okay.
Both, yes, to be able to offer more services, like outside.
And I will say you got, as James or the town staff has pointed out, you got caught in getting bumped up to a higher level of review.
That's what they presented the last...
Just because of the circumstances.
Sure.
We can't catch everything.
We're destroying our list.
We've been working for years on trying to get things simple. And yet again, we got caught up. You got caught up, but well, that's fine. That's why we have this process. Okay. Questions from the board?
So how's this work with... Is it going to be a residence and...
Yep.
So you mentioned using the... I guess we don't get into how they use the stuff internally. Okay. So how many people come in at a time?
We see one person at a time typically. Maybe two if it's a couple.
Okay.
So potentially four clients at any one time if you both schedule at the same time.
Is this... Each business is one or two clients? Is that what you're saying? Are you going to have two, potentially two businesses? Two?
There's one business and then independent contractors will be.
Okay.
Yep.
But it'll... It's broken into two entities of activity anyway, the two businesses up. I'm calling them businesses, but whatever you're referring to. Each one of them has only a couple of clients, that's what I'm doing. You said...
So right now, yes.
A couple.
Yeah.
So four potentially is like...
Yes.
Full house.
And that just impacts parking is the reason why we're asking a traffic flow.
Yeah. Yeah, it kind of... That's what it relates to, is just the parking access. Right. I don't care how many customers you have.
It could be family.
Yeah, it could be family.
Or one person.
But as you've shown, there's plenty of parking.
Yes, and I understand it in which some of the pictures from the gentleman that did the survey showed us. There used to be quite a bit of parking.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, you listed how much parking was there, right?
Yes. It's one of the requirements.
Existing spaces, six.
Yeah, okay, there it is. Yeah, thank you. You're adding more spaces?
Well, if you've driven by it right now, it kind of is dirt pile. So you've got to re-flatten what was there before.
Okay.
Just as an aside, because I live in the area, I realize that the... Whatever you want to call it, the... Within the circle of the U of your existing driveway, it's totally filled with crocus.
With what?
Crocus.
Crocus.
They're beautiful, yes.
Yes, okay. They should be...
Several photos on the Northwood Community chat page.
It was very cool.
Yes. Okay. So questions from the board?
I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business, but the hours of operation are exclude weekends?
I really like my own weekends. I understand there's a demand for it. But, you know, down the road, maybe like special events. I like art therapy, so...
Well, we normally suggest that if you're contemplating, you should put in more hours and more days.
If you think you're expanding, or it is better to be expansive of your hours, you do not have to work what you agree to.
So if you're thinking...
Essentially asking for more than you need. If you are thinking about weekends in the future, putting the full day of the weekends on the site plan so you don't have to come back.
Same thing if you think you're going to see somebody before they go to work. Put it in earlier. And, you know...
The hours of operation are what's agreed to between the town and yourself. And if there is ever a problem with that... Well, if you work outside of that, you then set yourself up for conflict.
Oh, okay.
So if you think you might be changing it...
If we can do that, yeah.
Let's think about it. We're not there. Not at a point where you have to have it yet. But before we go tonight, you should have an idea. And it's, like I said, we've had somebody who expressed the same sympathies for afternoons and evenings and weekends. But again, because there was the occasional time, they have included hours on Saturdays, early mornings and later evenings. I think it was like eight to six Monday through Saturday, is what I recall.
If you're going to have independent people, you know, you might not necessarily work, but they might.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
At the low traffic level you're suggesting here, it's likely never to be really much of an issue anyway, but you're... And furthermore, it doesn't... It's no detriment to you to do that. I mean, your first force were concerned that...
It forces all of any potential.
And you have a very busy property right across the street. Obviously, it's full seven days a week, so. They open early. Your activity is minor compared to...
Yes, we'll change that.
Okay. I think what I'll do if the board is okay with, doesn't have any further questions, is open public comment. Then we can address waivers.
I think I would at least run through what the requested waivers are first.
Well, let me do a public comment.
Public hearing first.
Identify what the waivers are in case somebody wants to comment on them.
Okay, sure.
I don't have it printed in front of me, but the applicant did indicate via email that they're amenable to amending their waiver request instead of the extensive list that was tracked on the checklist to the four that I identified on the first page of the memo. So that's your list.
That had been done, sorry.
Sorry, that's not it. The first page has the four that I provided.
Yeah. They should have it in front of them. So those would be the four waivers that you're acting on.
Okay. This is your four ten, two nineteen review? The date, and those A, two A, three D?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll read the waiver requests just so members of the public are here. Asking for a waiver for, to accept hand-drawn amendments to the existing plan in lieu of plans prepared by a professional engineer foregoing the existing conditions plan. A waiver for section nine D of the stormwater drainage. A waiver for nine F for sewage to accept the license, a letter from a licensed septic designer confirming the existing system can accommodate the proposed change in lieu of a formally stamped design. And section nine Q to forego the construction of sidewalks. Okay.
Bob, can you go back to the... What's the one with the septic again to just accept that?
Accept a letter from a licensed septic designer saying the existing system works will meet the change in lieu of having a stamped licensed design.
Great.
And that letter has been provided electronically?
Perfect. Okay, so those are waivers we'll be dealing with in a bit. At this point in time, I will open public comment to butters. But I don't believe we have any here.
Oh, these are your associates?
I will open it, public comment to members of the public for this application, if you would like to speak. That includes the associates, if you would like. You don't have to.
Boy, they're not even speaking in your favor. What does that say to them?
Your word just went up. Goodness.
Is it us or is it just Bob?
No, it's you, Hal.
No, it's all nine o'clock.
They're just here for support.
Moral support.
I'll close public comment subject to reopening it as needed. Okay, waivers. I don't see a good grouping for these, and good practice is to deal with them one by one, so let's deal with them one by one. You want me to read them again?
No.
No.
Just summarize. So section nine, seven B, to accept the hand-drawn plans.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the waiver?
Oh, we're going to do them all individually?
Yes, we're doing them all individually.
Oh.
Best practice is to know.
A second.
Okay. Motion by Victoria, or Ms. Parvally, sorry, I shouldn't use last names, and second by Mr. Kreider. Discussion on this. None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Section nine D for stormwater.
Motion to approve waiver?
Second.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Baldwin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Section nine F, sewage, to accept a letter from a licensed septic designer as opposed to a plan stamped by a professional engineer.
Motion to approve the waiver.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. And section nine Q to forego the construction of sidewalks.
Motion to approve waiver.
Second.
Because we never require it.
Motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. B. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Okay, you have your waivers. And I appreciate your flexibility on that kind of thing. James is always, and town staff is always usually very good about trying to minimize the... How about a paperwork you have to submit?
I very much appreciate that.
Okay. So, conditions of approval have not changed?
The following changes to be made to the plan. Everything under that has been changed on the plan that you have in front of you.
Okay.
I would leave condition one, the following changes be made to the plan, whatever hours of operation we might want to change to, that we have those.
Can we just... Is that something to do now?
Yeah, it would be something you could write in at the bottom of one of them and we can...
Yes. So you just need to tell us what they are.
Can we just do eight to eight?
Sure, you can do what you want.
That would be lovely. That would cover all bases.
Eight to eight, what days?
Every day.
Every day.
Makes it easy to remember.
I think I would leave conditions two, three, and four the same. Those would be provide written confirmation from the Northwood Road Agent confirming that the existing driveway can accommodate expected traffic from the proposed change of use or provide an updated Town of Northwood driveway permit. Number three, provide a letter from a licensed septic designer indicating that existing septic system can accommodate the proposed change in use. Both of those we've received, so I would say those conditions had been met, but I would leave them on there just as a formality. And then four, deliver three copies of the plan for signature.
No violars? Not this time? Okay, just double check.
Do we normally require violars for a minimal impact?
We don't require violars for the site plans.
Well, with conditions... No, go ahead. You were finishing. I was just going to make a motion to approve nineteen dash four with conditions.
Okay.
As stated by Mr. Verdine, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. B. Smith. Voice will go by night three. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Ready to go?
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll get a notice of decision from town staff sometime soon.
I'll try and get to it tomorrow.
Whatever.
Because if I don't do it tomorrow, it'll probably be like next Friday.
Okay. But that'll essentially lay out the conditions that we just read.
Bob, can I just make one note? If you'd like to list your business in the town directory, talk to the folks at the office here.
Thank you.
It'll be on the website then.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. I wrote them.
I keep throwing them in here because you never know when they're going to recycle back.
Sure.
I mean, he edited and adjusted a little bit, but not much.
Wouldn't it be so much easier to do with those big ones?
The one with the hours of operation on.
Therapy.
Sign the one that we just handed you. And only that one. And then we'll copy.
I'm trying to find the hours of operation.
Bottom left corner.
Did she change them on that one?
On one, yes. She put them on one, yes.
But are the hours of operation on the...
Oh, yes.
On the drawing?
They hadn't been on the drawing previously. They had just been in the application form, so she added it to that one that she just handed me. So while Bob's doing that, Dana made me make sure to come with this. Did we recommend that the select board renew Victoria's term previously as a representative to the commission?
No, it was just Scott.
Okay.
Am I due? Am I up?
Yeah, I think you expire either this month or next month.
No, her term does.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. Yeah, I think your term is coming due. I think for most representatives, we're fine with them continuing to serve until they're reappointed or a successor is appointed. But because you're the chair, we wanted to get the appointment rolling.
Oh, okay.
So we would have a place.
I did too, but...
I thought we had in our record that it was this year.
I think you... Didn't you just go a three-year last year? Something just recently.
Maybe forgotten three years.
Yeah, I was pleased that I was being appointed by the board last year.
Okay, we'll check on it. We'll make sure our paperwork is correct.
Okay.
Well, let me say this while we're all here. Should she need to be reappointed, can we do a letter from the board, on the planning board recommending?
Yes.
We'll look into it and...
Reappoint if necessary.
Yeah, well, it's the board's slot, yeah. Right, but I send a letter recommending.
Recommending, okay.
If necessary.
Yes.
I see nods, so I give those.
We need a motion. We should have a motion that affects.
Yes, please, if necessary.
So a motion to the...
So moved.
To appoint Victoria.
Letter to the board of selectmen recommending the appointment of Victoria Parvally to...
If necessary.
RPC if necessary.
If necessary.
Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Ms. Parvally's abstained. Understandable.
And maybe we should mention on the record that for the folks who might be watching us at home, that we are in need of alternates.
Yes. If they've gotten through nine fifteen, they don't want to hear that.
And we need a zone for member, if I can throw one another.
Yes.
That was made clear earlier.
Yes. Well, that's... Remember who it was, because I recognize when he was, he was on the board, but I think when I signed it.
He was chairman for many years.
Yeah.
Can I make just a comment? I'm the official TAC representative to the region planning, for the region planning commission, but because I'm on the NPO, it's really hard for me to get to both meetings. The one is the week before the NPO meeting, so if anyone would like to do that, I've been feeling badly that I just... And I try to get caught up with the minutes and stuff, but...
Could also do that SRPC hasn't done in the past, but Jen has seen it done at Nashua.
Yes.
Is to have me as, in my capacity as the town planner, serve as an alternate TAC representative.
Which I had either spoken to Linda about or I'd spoken to Jen about, because it's just great to have Northwood at the table at those meetings. Now, I haven't been there, so...
So for context, the technical advisory committee is not necessarily residents of the community, most other communities. It's the people with the technical experience, town staff. So there are a lot of town planners, town engineers that serve on that body who may not necessarily live in the community that they work in, but it's a hat they wear as an employee of the town. If I were to attend any of those meetings, all of that time would go under our transportation funding anyway. None of that time would be charged to the town.
Okay.
That seemed like a great idea.
Yeah, definitely. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I guess we're getting a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Good idea.
And one more transportation thing. Are you all aware of the 107 intersection being on the list of projects that's... The TAC committee decided recently on the... I wasn't there, as I just said, and I went to the NPO meeting last week and I heard, I looked down the list of approved projects for the tenure plan and the Northwood 107 intersection.
107 north?
Route four, Route four of 107 north, yeah. You know, is on the...
So that's on our shortlist to send out to you.
It's on the shortlist, yeah.
So a light for a light there?
And you all have advocated for that.
No, just changes.
It's going to be a while.
D cell lane, right?
I think it was a D cell lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think... Didn't we, when we talked about that, didn't we look at extending that clear up to High Street in that whole intersection? Or merging those two projects?
If you're talking about when Colin and I came and sat down with you and Linda and Joe Gunter, I had been on the job for about three weeks and I don't remember really anything about any of those meetings.
Well, anyway, so what the details are, I don't know the details, but, well, let me reference that.
And details can be tweaked and refined as it moves through the tenure plan process and...
But DOT actually did some preliminary engineering through this stuff to come up with a reasonable ballpark figure.
Right. That's right, I forgot they did that this year.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see that, so...
Did they have a ballpark figure that you remember?
I can get it to you. Yeah, I was thinking maybe you all knew about this already, but I've got the piece of paper, so...
So at that time, what James was talking about was the board authorized me to talk about the tenure plan from, as a representative of the town. And we talked about one of two aspects of that project, one being realigning some of the lanes on Route four so that adding a D cell lane as you're coming westbound, turning north onto School Street, High Street, so that as some member in public, I think I know who it is, but I don't want to quote him, said that what was currently happening is that people who are continuing on Route four move into the left lane. Well, if somebody's turning left, you're doing sharper moves or you're faced with oncoming traffic if you're trying to turn left. So doing the D cell lane, we've also looked then at making that a short corridor change to include going up School Street, 107 up to Pittsfield, going around the sharp bend where High Street comes in. Realigning that interchange, there was, I know it was a severe, I don't know if it was a fail or not, but essentially somebody, multiple vehicles have not made that corner. Coming around where upper, or old Pittsfield Road comes in. So to include realigning that road somehow as part of the one, essentially both ends of the bad parts of 107. I don't know if that's included in the tenure plan or not. My suspicion is it's not.
It's not in that particular one, but what is included is, you know how it, the hardware food place, you know, you can come off of that parking lot from any spot and enter Route four, so they're going to have specific access areas for that.
Right now, what happens is if you're coming eastbound on Route four, you want to go into the hardware store or more specifically, the country market, you're decelerating and then turning left. And the entrance is within a hundred feet of turning left onto High Street or School Street. So if most people... So if most people, if you're, if you're two vehicles traveling least and they both want to turn left, you don't know if they're going to turn left into the hardware store or into Route four, so if you're trying to go over 107, so you're trying to go 107, the person in front of you goes into the hardware store, you're caught up short, so that would, intersection, that alignment would change.
Bob, wasn't there something that you mentioned about them doing some work, or maybe this was in the town, underneath, I thought there was something about an unnamed stream.
Oh, the culvert.
Yeah.
Under High Street is being, or 107 by the community centers being redone. Is it this summer, this year, construction season?
And is that part of the, the state plan, or is that part of our plan?
That's this year's project.
Oh.
And they've already sort of noticed that they're doing it.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. It's not part of the plan.
The other one, do they have a date? I mean, a year in mind?
They don't give dates, do they, Ben?
Yeah, that's not SRPC's purview. Essentially, what we're doing is proposing projects that will go into years nine and 10, for the most part, of the ten-year plan, so whatever's approved this year will go into those two years to gradually work their way forward, just like a CIP, to be programmed in approximately the year 2029, 2030.
The fact that it's on the list is still.
That's right.
So that's Northwood has been the fifty-two interchange, because that's been approved, they were not, that's on.
That's in the ten-year.
That's in the ten-year plan.
Yeah.
Now 107 as well. Sounds good. Anything else?
No.
Mayo?
Yep.
Oh, actually, I didn't mean him.
Do you have to read every page of that into the record?
Give it up, Mr. Burdine.
Please.
Just ignore the folder.
Or hand it back, one of the others.
The planning conference is coming up, right?
Is this the old planning board? The fence just.
Copy to you.
No. Oh, okay. Okay.
That's my notes, so I don't know why that.
Oh, this thing?
And those are mine. Actually, I have them taped.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
Natural gas safety.
I'm not bothering with taking the page out. Okay, well, I'll pass it along if you want to read it for entertainment. Just a copy of a resident complaint about some vandalism on their property.
That's just FYI.
Yeah, yeah, no action needed. Okay, sounds good. I entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion needed? Any votes needed? Now we're here at nine twenty-five, thank you very much all.